Yes, planning commission meeting of June 1st to order. And just a minute before we get started, we did, under new business last week, discuss how we're going to organize the format of the meetings and some of the council were not here, so I would like to review that. And first, we're going to have the applicant speak and then staff will supplement any comments in addition to the memos presented. And then we're going to have the public speak and then the board discussion. So, the board's going to hold back on a lot of commentary on the presentation until such time as all the comments are in and we've heard from everyone. Additionally, there has been some back and forth between the applicants and the public and we'd like to, as well as the applicant maybe objecting to or trying to clarify in the middle of some statements, we'd like to try and keep those to an absolute minimum. There will be plenty of time for redress if we got off on the wrong track, so if the applicant can just save their comments for that time. If it's a specific question that the public has of the applicant, then I do encourage the applicant to answer the question while the member of the public is present. So with that-
Steve, I'd like to remind you that we also said that council should not interrupt board discussions.
Okay, yeah, I thought I said that, but that's good for the clarification. Thanks. So, with that, we'd like to review the minutes from the May 4th meeting. We have any motion?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second?
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next is DJB Properties, 131-133 Garrett Avenue, subdivide existing site into two and construct a twin home. Is the applicant here? Go ahead, please. Obviously, please state your name and-
Sure. I'm David Brasso of DJB Properties. Present with me is Gary Fisher, who's been my contractor for a number of years. Should we just go through the plan?
Please do, yes.
Okay. We're proposing to do a by right subdivision of a lot located at 133-131 Garrett Avenue. It's in the Garrett District. The plan is up on the screen. It's also larger copies here if anyone needs to take a closer look at it.
Mike?
Oh, sorry. This is fine.
On my screen at least, or my eyes, it's slightly out of focus.
Yeah, and that's upside down, too.
Can you turn it right side up?
Where can he do it?
If he can flip it.
Can you spin the plan around, please?
Oh, it's... Oh, geez, I'm sorry. I thought it was projected from somewhere else.
And then just centered a little bit? Yeah, it's perfect.
There we go.
That's true.
I flunked audio visual in high school. So, as we were saying, it's an existing lot. There's nothing on it right now, so we want to develop it into a twin that complies with the Garrett Avenue District building requirements and zoning requirements.
Okay, and have you taken a look at the staff letter?
We did, yeah. The two letters that we received, the major-
Could you just hold a second, please? We have a little technical issue on our end, so I may have to interrupt in the beginning until we get it resolved. So, if you just hold on a second, thanks.
Absolutely.
No? Because I- Thank you.
All right. So, yeah, what I would like is if when you go through the application, if you could just let us know what the items that you have an objection to or that you will not comply with. If you will comply with them, we don't need to review them or tell us you'll comply. Just let us know the ones that you have issues or objections to.
Absolutely. If I can direct everyone to the... Excuse me, let me find the correct letter. It's the one item that discusses curb cuts. I'm just having trouble finding the exact number on the letter.
This is the letter from Gannett Fleming?
This is the Gilmore Associates' letter dated May 22nd, 2015. Number one, review materials will comply with number one. Number two, the waivers that we would request is number one, waiver 255-7.C. The existing right-of-way is 28 feet and not 60 feet, so we don't intend on expanding the right-of-way for this one unit. We're just going to comply with what's already done on that street with the setback. So, that's a requested waiver.
Okay, thanks.
Steve, what do you want to teach us? Thank you.
It's 3.1. Sure. 3.2 talks about streetlights. They'll be spaced a minimum of 40 feet apart. That street currently has what we deem to be adequate street lighting. We don't intend to change the street lighting that's already provided on the street. And when I say "street lighting," I mean that the big overhead lights that are on the utility poles, not to be confused with any lamps that we might have in the front yard of the buildings that we would erect.
So, is staff requesting additional street lighting in addition to what is there?
You know, I'm unclear. It just states on number two, 255.94.A, number two, "Streetlights shall be spaced a maximum 40 feet apart on each side of the street." I went down there today and I didn't measure the distance between the streetlights, but the streetlights are already there on that street.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, so I would just request that I apologize and get in there quick enough. If the applicant could back up and just show us, just for our notification, what the 60-foot right-of-way line would look like on your plan, even if you just scale it back. And my other request is that the applicant or his engineer actually measure the streetlights on the street and see what the distance is between them that run by his property. As opposed to, and I'm not saying I don't believe you, but as opposed to saying there's plenty of streetlights there, we need to see it on the plan and perhaps you could show us all that.
Sure. We would have to revise the plan and add that, which we can comply with.
Okay.
Again, the same thing with the 60-foot right-of-way. I don't know what it would be today.
Excuse me a second, David, if you would.
Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So, I believe we are requesting a waiver of 255.94.A. Saying that, if I interpret it correctly, it suggests we might need to add streetlights. I'm asking for a waiver to not have to add streetlights, that they're adequately lit on that street, but we can certainly provide that, what streetlights are on the plan and how far apart they are. Number three, 255.94.B., parking lot lights are required. We plan on addressing lot lights, as we typically do, by having lights mounted on the rear of the property that are motion sensitive, so they only go off when somebody comes in the backyard or a car drives in the backyard. And hopefully, that's acceptable.
Are they on the plan?
Well, they're not on the plan because this is a site plan, but they would be on the architectural plan of the building elevations, which we'd submit for building approval. But yes, we would add those. And we would intend to comply with that number three by putting lights on the physical house.
Would that be along the driveway as well?
They would not be erected on the driveway, as in like a post light, but more like a floodlight that you would attach to the house that would shine onto-
Well, that's what I meant, the lighting of the driveway.
Oh, the actual access to the driveway?
Well, the driveway down the side of the house.
Yeah, we certainly could do that as well. We could illuminate both, so if that's a requirement, we're happy to comply with that.
Okay.
The driveway now is in use. It's a shared driveway. It's in use by the property to the left of us. I don't believe there is any lighting, but we certainly can add it. It's not a problem. Number four, we'll comply with. Number five, we would comply with. Number six says that new driveways shall be discouraged. We're asking for a waiver of 255-97.A. The driveways are shown on the plan here and here to provide access to the proposed garages. Number seven, 255-98.A. is talking about curb cuts. It actually says in the letter that we're proposing three new curb cuts to Garrett What I'd like to explain is our interpretation is that we're not requesting any additional curb cuts. The curb cuts are already on the plan or on that street. So, there's a curb cut currently for the access alley that's in place now. It services the alley now that's in use.
Where is that curb cut now?
It's right at the end for this access alley. That's already existing. There is a curb cut on this street right now. It's in the wrong location for what we had planned, so we would eliminate that curb cut and move it down to this spot and have that one curb cut service both residences. So, we'd like to basically assign a credit for that curb cut, expand it, and move it, but it would be the same curb cut. So hence, there's no additional curb cuts required that we're requesting.
Do we consider that three or two curb cuts in light of the fact that it's being Anyone want to tackle that one?
I understand what he's saying about the one existing. I'm not seeing the second curb cut that he's talking about. Is that next to the property, adjacent to your site?
It's... No, it's on the lot, but it's way down here at the end where I'm indicating. It's not drawn on this plan, so we can add that to the plan.
So, it's one additional curb cut is what you're looking at, then? So, you'd be required to get a waiver for that?
Well, we're... Depends on how I interpret it, because we're proposing only one single curb cut, albeit a larger curb cut than the existing one. So, take this existing curb cut, put a full... you know, eliminate that and simply move it down to the center of the property and widen it to the proper dimension.
Okay. If you're... My interpretation of that would be two driveways. You're intending to make access to two separate units, so that would be two driveways, moving it from the use of one driveway to two driveways, so it would be one additional driveway. That would be my interpretation, but I'm not legal.
I agree with Amy. Yeah, I agree. It is, in fact, two driveways, but in fact, only requesting one continuous curb cut that would serve the two driveways.
It doesn't matter. You're still having two vehicles coming out of two locations to access the road.
Correct.
So regardless of whether or not it's a continuous driveway, in my opinion, it would be two separate. So, to me, you would need to ask for a waiver on that.
Okay. So, we're asking for a waiver for the curb cut requirements that we have drawn up in the plan. The other thing to note is that typically curb cuts are discouraged in light that they eliminate parking spaces from the on-street parking. Note that on Garrett Avenue, that side of the street, parking is not... it's prohibited to park on that side of the street anyway. So, our curb cuts would not eliminate any existing parking spots, since you can't park on that side of the street anyway. The reason we're asking for them is the look of the house and the functionality of the house with three required parking spaces sets up much better to have one parking space as we have per-unit access from the front via the garage. And if anyone is interested in the proposed design of the house, there's the front elevation. We're still working with the architects to flesh everything out, but this is where we are right now with showing garages in the front as planned with porches on the side and the rest of the house is shown here. We have a layout, too, but I don't think that's really that relevant.
Do you have height? And is that three stories or two?
It's a two-story layout with a vaulted ceiling on the third floor, so it's within... I forget what the Garrett... I think it's 28 feet, but it's within the envelope of what's permitted on Garrett Avenue. The pitch of the roof and all that is also in compliance.
Great, okay. So, a couple of questions. This is one of the first... I think this is one of the first redevelopments in Garrett Hills since the new zoning ordinance. I have a couple of specific questions, but one of my overriding comments is I'm a little concerned about all the waivers that you want from the ordinance, given how much time I know the neighborhood put into developing it because they were going for a very specific look and feel. I want to make sure I understand something correctly, because it says that in our zoning, it says you have no waivers requested, but in our zoning, it says that for semi-detached structures, the side yard setback is 12 feet. And if I read this correctly, the side yard setback for the number 133 is only 10, either 10 feet or 10.25. So, I'm not sure that that conforms with zoning, and I wanted to have staff weigh in on that. The other thing that's missing from this, and it goes back to, we were asking about where the lights were and, you know, sometimes particularly, you know, when they're commenting saying about the lights having them 40 feet apart, we have a requirement in Saldo for a features page. It's supposed to be 500 feet. That's missing from this plan, and that's where... Right? We have that for even the minor subdivisions. Yes, no? And that's missing from this, so we're not able to see your development in the context or your subdivision in the context of the rest of the neighborhood. And that's also a Saldo requirement, so I'm not sure why it's not here.
That's actually on Roger's letter?
Yeah, right. So, it's not here. But the side yard thing, the... You know, am I maybe not understanding that? Because it looks like for 131, they're at 13.47, but for 133, it's only at 10 feet. So, you may have a zoning issue, is one of my points. And, you know, again, it's the first redevelopment in the neighborhood. Things like the sidewalks, I know, are really important to them there. Things like the, you know, the look and the scale. I know that they've worked really hard on building heights, so I'm going to assume that that looks is going to be in conformance. It looks like a lot. I mean, it will be a big change. I know the lot's empty right now. Yeah, so... But I didn't want to weigh in too much, because I think there might be a zoning issue with the side yard.
If there is indeed a zoning issue, it's news to us. We didn't intend to do anything that wasn't in conformance with the zoning. I had my civil engineer look at it as well, as we had a pre-planning meeting with the folks at Radnor Township. The footprint hasn't changed, and they didn't indicate that we were not in compliance. So, if we are not in compliance, that's brand-new information for me tonight. So, that's not our intention. The intention is to have setbacks all in conformance and not need any zoning requirements. So, we'll absolutely double-check that, but... And Susan, again, our intention is not to ask for multiple waivers. Some of the waivers, I think, would apply to any building that you were doing on this street, because it's waivers for things like a 60-foot setback when the sidewalks are already in place at 28 feet. That's not specific to our house. That's specific to the street in general.
No, I know, but I just... I guess my comment, and, you know, I want others to weigh in, is that so, for instance, they went for the four-foot sidewalks. So, if you're one of the first developments and we give the waiver and let you start to do a three-foot sidewalk, as a for instance, then the next development's going to say, "Well, it's only three feet here, three feet here."
Actually, so, could I ask later?
That was the only thing.
Yeah, let's just... That's our discussion. Let's just investigate now and ask questions and then we'll...
That's my question, is the sidewalk.
Yeah, and that's a good question, so. Is there anything else?
Yeah, well, and on number four, that's one of the ones we intend to comply with. So, all these noted changes by Gilmore, we are in agreement that we'll comply with those and redraw the plan to indicate that. The only one that we're asking for a waiver for specifically as it relates to the property itself is number five, the curb cuts, so that we can use this design and provide a parking space in front. That's the Gilmore letter. There's another letter from Gannett Fleming, which we intend to comply with everything. I think it also mentions the same curb cut waiver requirement, so it's redundant, which is okay. So, we've already asked for it.
Yeah, I got you.
But everything else in the Gannett Fleming letter dated May 22nd, 2015, we intend to be in compliance with.
Okay. Great. Back to the Gilmore letter for a second. What about the garage in the rear comment?
We looked at garages in the rear, and with the impervious coverage and the stormwater management, we don't know of a very good way to comply with the three required parking spaces and still put garages in the rear with the layout of this lot with access. We couldn't figure out a way to adequately conform with everything and still put garages in the rear and provide three parking spaces and not go over the impervious and still have stormwater management. You know, the provided area that we're going to require for stormwater management. So, it's not that we didn't want to do it. We looked at it. We just weren't able to accommodate it.
Any other staff questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
A question for staff. I'm sorry.
I did say the wrong... Any other board questions?
Yeah, I do. Am I allowed to ask them now?
You're always allowed to ask questions.
It didn't sound like it earlier.
No, it's the commentary we want to hold off on.
Okay. I always have commentary, too. The driveway in the front, in front of the garage, I think the distance there is about 15 feet, and I believe that... Does that go over the sidewalk, too?
As it's drawn, it's showing, I believe, about a 10-foot actual driveway, not including the four-foot sidewalk. The letter, you know, suggests that 15 is required. We looked at that as well. We looked at pushing the whole property back to accommodate 15. What we're really trying to do is discourage anyone from having the ability to park a car in front of the garage.
That's not going to happen, you know. People will park in front of the garage, because it's common... You know, it's human nature to take the easiest route, and it's in front. So, I think your intention might be not to have it, but I think what is going to happen is the car will park there, especially if somebody's visiting, and the tail of the car is going to hang out into the street. And the street is so narrow that I think it would be difficult. And then you, of course, are blocking the sidewalk, too. I really would like to see you try to work on putting the garages in the back. That's a comment, I know. But maybe the... What's the square footage of the houses?
I'm going from memory, but I believe...
Well, Mark.
I think they're about 2,200.
2,200, okay. That's a pretty good-sized house.
Maybe 2,000, because they're only two stories.
Yeah. Maybe the houses that you're trying to build are too big for that property, and that's why you can't get everything in that you need.
I don't know how well you can see this. I'm happy to pass that out. But I don't think the layout is lavish to put a three-bedroom house and to accommodate what people are used to today for bathrooms and on-site laundry and those types of things. So, we actually went to the pre-planning meeting with a slightly larger house, and then we redesigned the whole footprint based on the pre-planning meeting to accommodate some of the questions that we had from them regarding adequate parking spaces, impervious covers, and all the other type of incidents.
What's on the third floor?
Nothing. There is no third floor.
But you showed dormers up there.
Visually, this is a false floor. So, this is just basically aesthetics.
Okay.
You have-
How much space is there? Could somebody put boards on the floor and turn it into space?
No, not... No. The plan, if you... You know, if you were to see the architectural's rendering, the plan here is more or less a vaulted ceiling.
Mm-hmm.
So, instead of having a nine-foot ceiling, you have maybe a 14-foot ceiling, but there's definitely not enough room for somebody to then go back and retrofit this to be a third floor.
Okay.
That was a concern and one thing we looked at, and we... You know, I asked the architects. It's merely an aesthetic, and it doesn't give that provision.
Okay.
So, this house will always be a two-story house.
All right. Okay. I still feel the house is a little oversized for the property, and that's why you're having difficulty with it. I think, human nature being what it is, that people will park the car in the front, because people also tend to fill up their garages with stuff instead of their cars. But I think... I know, I would rather see a garage in the back, and I think it would work better for the street also. So, I'll save the rest of my comments. Also, are there any easements or deed restrictions on the property?
There are no-
Has anybody checked that?
We did. We ran a title search, came back clean. I have a copy of it, which we'll submit in the documents.
Okay.
It was delayed, and it took a while for me to get it, so I haven't had it prior to this. The... There is an easement that the access on the side has an easement. Both houses share the same road or access alley, whatever we want to term it. Part of it's on our property and part of it is on their property, so there is an easement already in place.
So, then, three houses are going to be sharing that driveway?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. They're currently using four feet of the property on this plot currently, even though there's nothing on it.
You mean the adjacent property owner?
Yeah, the adjacent property spills over four feet, and they're currently using the easement, you know, daily.
All right. Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff. On the Gilmore letter, paragraph five, regarding the curb cuts, where it says the plan does not appear to follow PennDOT publication 72, et cetera, are we able to grant a waiver to a PennDOT standard?
The requirement is that they are barrier-free, and typically, we follow the PennDOT procedures for designing the curb rents, and he already indicated that he would be willing to comply
Question, can you show me where the 65-foot right-of-way would be? 60-foot, excuse me, right-of-way would be? Could you draw a line or...
I'd be guessing at it.
I have my ruler.
Well, I guess 1 inch is 10 feet, so you want to look at us and see if we can figure out a 50 feet?
It's an additional 13.5 feet from the existing right-of-way line, so it almost takes you back. If your driveway was, what did you say, was 15 feet, it's somewhere back near there.
1 inch equals 10 feet, yeah, so it's...
Is the existing right-of-way 60 feet?
Or is it 30 feet from the... Is this the center line?
At the cartway or the right-of-way?
The answers from the center line?
No. They want to go 60 feet.
Could I ask staff a question while they're doing their quick measurement? Regarding Amy's comment, 255.99B, about the length of the driveway, we ran into this with an application last month where it turns out that the definition of off-street parking in zoning defines the length. So, if you can't meet the parking definition per zoning, then you're maybe not technically providing off-street parking. So, Amy's comment about your 15 feet is maybe a zoning issue as well. You have to... The definition of a parking space in zoning is, there's a prescribed length, 20 feet, I think it is. I can double-check. And so, the concern with the driveway, in addition to not wanting it in the front, which is a Garrett Hill thing, it may not technically conform to the definition of off-street parking or of a driveway. Off-street parking, I don't want to mix the two, sorry.
And that's actually one of the things we wanted to clarify, is that we don't want it to be viewed as a parking space here, even though you're saying, "Human nature is, people will use it such as a parking space." It's not... In our interpretation, that's not a zoning issue as much as a violation. It's a violation if you park in a non-parking space.
But you don't... That's... You have not calculated, counted that as a parking space in your plan.
We have not. The garage proper is a parking space, and then there's two spaces here, two spaces here. These two would serve this unit, these two would service this unit.
Okay.
They're 20 by nine, or 20 by 10, so they conform with an existing parking space. The previous question is 60 feet puts you slightly behind the line of where the garage is today.
You should be—if you measure from the center line of the road, 30 feet, that's—that's the line we're talking about, I think you're too far.
30 feet, not 60.
From the center line of the road.
From the center line of the road, you take 30 feet, and it puts you—
That's just past the sidewalk now. That's what it said. So, based on the scale here, that is just past the sidewalk line. It's somewhere right in here, is 30 feet from the center line.
You were—you were measuring from the opposite side of the cartway. You need to measure from the beginning of the property line. One—one line to your right from where you were just—there you go.
30 feet. So two-thirds of the way through the garage, is 30 feet. Is it this—
That's it.
Okay. It's really—it's about four feet of additional setback, is what it looks like from—it—from here.
But that's the front of the house.
Front of the house, yeah.
That's not the right-of-way.
Would any other staff—
I didn't get my answer from staff about—so if you're counting the garage as your parking space, and it's not 20 feet, that—or is the—is the garage 20 feet?
He does have the—if he is not counting that 15-foot area between the garage and the street, which it sounds like he is not, then his two spaces to the rear, plus the one in the garage, would provide him with three spaces for the lot, total.
And Susan, the—the setback issue, you're in the G—this is in the GHN district, which is 10 feet, side yard.
The GHN?
N.
Why isn't it the Garrett Avenue? It's not the right area?
Well, there's moulable Garrett—
So this particular area is Garrett Avenue?
GHN, it's in Rogers' review letter, right at the front.
Thank you.
That's 10 feet.
Yeah, okay, that's good. Any other board questions?
That right-of-way is—is very narrow. Their cars do park on the opposite side of the street from where the—the—
Sorry.
Forgive me. They do park on the opposite side of the street from where these garages are located, is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Can you explain to me how a car's going to be able to back out of that garage and turn left or right? I mean, it seems as though it's kind of—
Yeah, let's save that for our discussion.
There—are—for the record, there are other garages even closer to the street now in existence, on that exact street, that are functional today. On that side of the street, yes. Just over the other side of the train tracks, heading north. It—what's that?
On your side.
Yes.
It's on your side of the train tracks.
Okay.
When you come up, thanks.
Again, our objective is not to violate the Garrett Avenue regulations and planning and all that, it's to actually accentuate it and take a lot and make—it make it useful with a—with a plan that—that actually will be quite pleasing for the homeowner as well as to passersby.
Okay, great, thanks. Like to hear from the public? Any comments?
Oh, I'm sure there's several.
My name is Patty Barker, I'm chair of the Garrett Hill Coalition. I'm actually—I have two statements to read. One is my own statement, and one is one from Philip R., who was unable to be here this evening, and he was vice-chair of the Garrett Hill Steering Committee, and then chair of the Garrett Hill Implementation Committee. So if it's all right, I'll read both, or I can read one, and then give somebody else a turn and come back up, so. Switching glasses now. So as I said, I'm chair of the Garrett Hill Coalition, fondly known as the GHC, an organization that was formed in 2007, when Radnor Township decided to rezone Garrett Hill. Over the course of two and a half years, the community, the township, the planner, and the Garrett Hill Steering Committee worked very hard to craft the Garrett Hill Master Plan—here it is—and the Garrett Hill Zoning District ordinances, which I would like to think you would have read. The GHSC met weekly in a public forum to make sure that these documents reflected the desires of the community. The GHZD documents were endorsed by the community and adopted formally by Radnor Township in October of 2009. The Coalition and the community support the development of 131 and 133 Garrett Avenue. The empty lot has been a de facto parking lot on Garrett Avenue for many years. We look forward to seeing new houses on that lot and welcoming new Garrett Hillians to our neighborhood. While the applicant contends he is allowed to build garages at the front of the property, it was clearly the intention of the Garrett Hill Zoning District ordinances to prohibit garages at the front of the property. Section 280-49.12B states, "All private garages shall be located to the rear of the principal structure." Unfortunately, Chapter 280 zoning defines a private garage as an accessory structure. This was not the intent of the ordinance, this is a loophole. I would respectfully request that the Planning Commission ask the Board of Commissioners to fix this loophole by removing the word "private" in that section. The township, the planner, and the community all collaborated to preserve the existing pattern of development, the scale, and the intimacy of our neighborhood. This is a neighborhood of front porches and cars parked in the rear, except for the one garage that DJB just referred to. Please encourage the applicant to respect the vision of this community. The applicant should take pride in the fact that he is going to be the first to craft the Garrett Avenue streetscape, as Garrett Hillians want it to look. Garrett Hillians very clearly do not want garages in the front. We want to preserve the character, intimacy, and scale of Garrett Avenue. Please help preserve Garrett Hill by making sure that the ordinance is created by the community, for the community, are respected and enforced. I do have a couple of questions I'd like addressed, and I'm sorry, I didn't really hear. What is the proposed height of the structures?
Less than 30 feet.
Less than 30 feet, okay, great. And Gilmore Associates stated in their report that eight waivers are required. Doesn't that automatically mean that the applicant must appear before the zoning board if—for any of the waivers? No, okay. Waiver number eight states, "Off-street parking shall be at least 9.5 feet in width and 20 feet in depth." We just addressed that, that it seems like because it's not going to be a parking space, it doesn't have to be the 20 feet. I agree with Kathy. Have you all been on Garrett Avenue? We don't have enough parking. If there is a space, someone is going to park there, and absolutely, it's going to be hanging out onto the sidewalk and out into the street. So with all due respect, I appreciate the applicant's desire to prevent people from parking there, but if there is a spot, it will be parked in. I can guarantee you of that. Please note that Gilmore Associates recommends that the applicant consider providing rear garages. Please follow their recommendation. And again, please help preserve Garrett Hill by making sure that the ordinance is created by us, for us, are respected and enforced—it enforced. Please let democracy prevail. And I want to thank you for your service to the citizens of Radnor Township, and specifically to the citizens of Garrett Hill. So that's my statement. This is what Phil R. has to say. "We appreciate the development of this property on Garrett Avenue, which has been a vacant lot for decades. Overall, this plan seems to provide for good residential use within this neighborhood, and we are glad to see this lot utilized for residential—residential use. We respectfully request that the Planning Commission ensure that all elements of the GHN zoning ordinance be adhered to, including the maintaining and enhancing the character and scale of this neighborhood. For reference, here is how this area is described in the Garrett Hill Master Plan, adopted in 2008." This is from the Existing Conditions Analysis: Historic and Physical Content Context, page six of the Garrett Hill Master Plan. "On Garrett Avenue, Williams Road, Callan End Avenue, and Wentworth Lane in Summit Terrace, most of the residential architecture is of a cottage style, and most commonly of wood construction. This type of style was popularized in the 19th century by easily obtained pattern books from architects like Andrew Jackson Downing and Alexander Jackson. It is characterized by peaked roofs, front porches, well-ordered windows, often with dormers, and by its small size." And I do want to acknowledge that DJB has tried to include those things in their plan. "There seem to be several waivers that need to be granted for this specific plan to be approved. Foremost among them is pointed out by memorandum by Amy Kaminsky regarding curb cuts and off-street parking. Number six, new driveways shall be discouraged. The plan includes two new driveways in addition to the proposed shared access. Number seven, existing curb cuts may be modified or shared with adjacent property owners, provided there is no increase in the number of existing curb cuts. Number eight, off-street parking—I won't belabor you with these, you heard them." Which leads Ms. Kaminsky to her recommendation. "We recommend the applicant consider providing rear garages for both units with one shared access to the rear of the property. The GHC supports this recommendation, as it allows for the plan to better integrate into the design and scale of the neighborhood. That is marked with front porches and yards, creating a neighborhood streetscape and parking in the rear. This is also supported in the intent of the GHC regulations as follows, which is Section 280-49.2 Purpose Intentive Regulations. Article XIA of the zoning code is hereby enacted to provide and manage opportunities for development and redevelopment within the Garrett Hill Zoning District, hereafter GHZD, as set forth in the Garrett Hill Master Plan, adopted by the Board of Commissioners on July 21, 2008, and revised July 20, 2009, as set forth in Exhibit A. These regulations are intended to provide for maintaining and/or improving the character of Garrett Hill, for an appropriate mix of residential and non-residential uses within the GHZD, and provide for enhanced vibrancy through building, site, and most importantly, streetscape design. As the GHN code calls for private garages to be placed in the back of the property, clearly that is the intent of these regulations, for several reasons. Number one, garages in the front interfere with design of front porches and yards, the streetscape intended. Number two, the apron of any front garage will likely be utilized for parking, creating a front yard parking streetscape, clearly the opposite of what has been intended by the community-approved zoning. Number three, three curb cuts in this street destroy already limited on-street parking in this area, although, as DJB says, there's no street parking on that side. As witnesses and participants in the GHZD process, we can assert that it was the document's intention and the community's intention to place garages at the rear of the properties. With all this in mind, we respectfully request that, number one, related waivers not be granted to allow this condition to occur in this neighborhood; number two, that the applicant considers developing a rear garage—garage solution with additional parking in the rear, while creating a front yard or porch streetscape. This appears quite doable, even preserving a rear deck area." And Phil then ends with, "Thank you for your service." So thank you for listening, and let democracy prevail.
Sarah Pillen, Garrett Avenue. Kathy, there are five dwellings that will use that one driveway. Robuka has an upstairs and a downstairs, and a full house next, so this will be five dwellings in one driveway to get to the backyard. I'd like to speak to the practicality of—excuse me—not the garages in the front, but what it does to it. Our street is very narrow, and as you know, it is full of college students. We have parking permits, it was nothing we asked for, it was imposed on us in about 1983, because it's almost impossible to park. This lot has been empty since the 90s, and it has been a virtual parking lot. Usually, four, six, eight, sometimes 10 cars are parked in the lot all the time. So the students are gone, and the street is very narrow. We—we play a weaving action now, because people drive big cars, and they don't necessarily snuggle right up to the curb, so you literally can't just drive up the street, you have to wait till the person coming—you each find a driveway or an open space to pull over. I live exactly opposite the house, and it's a good thing I drive a very small car, because in an SUV or a mid-sized car, I cannot get out of my driveway without really working hard to avoid the car that is directly across the street. The students are gone now, and as I came down tonight, I saw two cars—they belong to the neighborhood—who are parked exactly across the street from where this house is going to be. So they're going to run into a problem, because they're not going to be able to back out, and dear God, if someone did take advantage of parking in that open space, it's going to make it even more difficult. There is no clear run on the street now, it is very interrupted, because you have to wait for people to turn, come in, come out, dodge around, and I really think that a—that garage in the front and a possible parking space for someone to pull in is really a bad idea. The police are very vigilant, or else the residents are very vigilant. I had someone who came to my house, she has a big SUV, I was pulled all the way up, she backed in because we were transferring something, and the front end of the car was about 18 inches on the sidewalk, very temporarily. I don't know who it was, called the police, and the police were there in an instant, saying, "You've got a car on the sidewalk." So it was not a problem, she was going to leave, we said goodbye, and she left. But it's not something that you can ignore. The other side of the street is very narrow, and because it has the telephone poles and the streetlights. In places, that sidewalk is only 18 inches wide. So most people walk up the east side, which is the side that this house is going to be built, and then they have to cross to get to the Pig and Whistle. So it's just—the whole thing is not a good situation. I think it's great that houses are being built here, but I think we need to be very cognizant of the existing traffic and the patterns of traffic moving and trying to move in and out. It is not an easy trip. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'd like to move on to board comment.
I have some familiarity with the neighborhood. I factually think that it's just not the right project with the garages in the front, it's completely inconsistent with the neighborhood, and I'm not in favor of it, as presently designed, for that reason.
When you're talking about a vacant lot and development, I don't see the need to go down the waiver route, because the—the regulations were in place when this was designed, and those regulations should have been accounted for by the design, rather than ask for waivers from those requirements. I visit a dear friend on Garrett Avenue, and always have to park my SUV hanging over her driveway into the curb, because I don't fit otherwise, and my car's not particularly big. Most of the houses on Garrett Avenue, I would venture to guess, are in the 1,200 to 1,500 square foot range. I guess it's possible there's one or two that have a garage in the back. I appreciate that you want to bring those amenities in, but each unit is close to double what every house on that—single-family homes on that street are, 1,200, 1,300 square feet, they're pretty small. If you could—I—I know the neighborhood, if you scale it down a bit, I think maybe you'll be able to put the parking in the rear and have it be in even—not only a—a nice economic addition to the neighborhood, but one that really sets the tone for the—for the zoning that they worked so hard for.
I'm concerned about the—with the sidewalks in particular. The garages in front, again, I think it's inconsistent with the—the streetscape that she talked about, and I remember long, long reviews and discussions about the Garrett Hill Zoning Districts when it was before, in 2000, was it '07 or whatever? And streetscape was a really important piece of it, and that's why I think that's real important. important. Again, the ability to back out of the garage without hitting other cars, that's why I asked the question earlier, and I'm not going to belabor it at this point. I just don't think the garages belong in the front if they can be moved into the back in some way, shape, or form.
I've heard everyone's comments and the public, and I have a small concern about five properties using one driveway. Perhaps one thing that could be done would be to restrict parking on the opposite side of the street across from the mouth of that driveway. Not, can't be done? No. Well, I think that the folks at Garrett Hill want garages in the rear, and I think that this has to be redesigned.
I have a suggestion for you. If you remove the space that you're using for the garages there and put them in the back, you could then cut back a couple feet from the back property line, from the back of your house and still maintain the same square feet. You'll also be eliminating some impervious there so that you could pick that up in the back. I think you can get the garages in the back, and I think you know that's what we want. But I'm trying to address your needs. I think the property is attractive. I went down that road tonight on my way home from work, and I sat on the side and looked at the houses, and it's true, they have nice little porches in the front. It's very quaint-looking, and I think your house almost gets there, but the big peak of that one garage element in the front really, I think, detracts from that, yeah. If you just keep the porches there and put the garages in the back, that peak of the garage is very overpowering there, and it will give you some space on the inside of your house. So, I'd like to see you try to work that out. Now, I'm concerned with five residential units using the driveway. First off, I think you're not supposed to have more than two or three using one driveway, even though there's an easement. I think there's code regarding that. Is that true? I think it's no more than three houses come off of a driveway. Anybody?
I think it is three.
Yeah.
I think you're correct.
Three houses or three units? What is it?
Three units, taking access. I thought that's a public road that's a cul-de-sac.
Private drives, yeah.
So, do we have, so is there an additional zoning?
But that's the other property, because there's two on this, but that's where the easement comes into consideration. So, I think you might want to look at supplying your driveway on your property, if you can do that. Because I know one property was very close to the 30% impervious, but the other one had some more space there. Or is it 30 or 60? I forget.
I have a question for the applicant. Is it that the neighbor is using part of your property for their easement access?
There's approximately four feet times the linear distance of the driveway that's in our property now, so there is an easement already?
So, they are using your property?
They are.
For the driveway?
Correct.
Okay, so you can't cut them off?
We didn't intend to, but, yes.
You cannot because they have an easement on your property, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. That...
That's a real issue.
Yeah.
I think we need to hear from staff to get clarification to see if there's need to seek a zoning variance or...
When you look at the code on 25598, it says that they encourage landowners to enter into agreements, and then the code above that with curb cuts says that shared driveways through agreements between adjoining property owners are hereby encouraged, but it doesn't say a number of what the limit is unless I just haven't found the code in here yet.
I guess we need an answer as to whether or not that many units, since I believe the other house probably predated zoning and the easement over this originally.
Well, it depends if...
No?
I think that has to be answered no matter what because the rear parking is already going to be using that driveway.
No, no, I agree, has to be answered. The real question is, does it, if we're making a motion tonight, then we need an answer.
I don't think we're making a motion because they're going to redesign it. Right?
Well, we can still, we can still make...
Maybe I'm reading into it, but...
We can still make a motion.
I mean, when we went to the pre-construction or pre-planning meeting, we were trying to gain insight into the nuances of the different Garrett Avenue code, and we specifically asked the question that was brought up to be a loophole. And we were told, you know, we discussed it, and we were told that you could put garages in the front because they're not, they're private, they're not detached. Our object, our purpose was not to exploit a loophole.
I understand.
So, we designed it this way because we thought we were in compliance. It's clear from everybody here tonight that nobody wants the garages in the front except perhaps me, and I don't like being in that position. So, I agree, the redesign is what's needed to be done here to see about putting the garages in the back. What we would like to do is figure out if there is a way to do that and still be in compliance. The catch-22 of how many, how many domasals can use the easement is one that is still up in the air, and then if putting the garages in the back pushes you to your extent because you need certain turning radiuses, and now you've got to add blacktop and impervious...
But you have that back there.
Yeah. Is there, is there any relief for using permeable materials in this district? That's something I'd need to research.
It kind of goes back and forth, I think.
Yeah, but let's, let's, let's not have that discussion tonight. Let's, why don't you work that out with staff?
Absolutely.
Okay, because there's, there's back and forth on that.
Yeah.
I have a quick question. The three, the three houses off of one driveway, I thought that was if they didn't have frontage, that you could only have three off of one driveway, if it was a shared driveway where they didn't have. So, I don't think it applies here.
I think staff is a little...
So, if they can look into that...
We're not sure that's a requirement.
Because I don't think that's going to be an issue for you.
So, what I would encourage you to do then, based on the comments we're hearing, obviously the redesign of the garage is pretty easy. I would try and work with staff on satisfying them on relative to the existing right-of-way, you know, the plan that they suggested. Streetlights, show that on a plan like they suggested, you know, work with them on the motion sensors. We talked about driveways, curb cuts, that should all... You also need to put the 500-foot features on your plan, 500-foot radius to show the existing features. That's, but you can discuss that with them as well.
Sure.
I mentioned that, streetlights, you know, you need to show streetlights on the plan. Side yard, we took care of, and just work with staff on sidewalks as well.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask the applicant, so if you come back for the July meeting, even if everything went well, the Board of Commissioners meeting is a week after, we would need an extension from the applicant for the, to go through August because the date will end before the August Board of Commissioners meeting, so we would need an extension from the applicant.
So, we request an extension.
Oh, request it here now? Yeah. If that's the case, we would like to request an extension.
Thank you. So, great.
We'll need that from you in writing when you get a chance.
Okay.
I have a question for staff on the language of this, and it's referring to the parking as a parking lot. Do we really call private parking on residential property, basically two houses, a parking lot? And do they have to have similar lighting to what a regular parking lot would have?
Are you referring to a SADO provision or a zoning ordinance provision?
Well, we're talking about the lighting requirements for a parking lot in some of the comments, and I wouldn't call the parking in the back of a residential home a parking lot, or is...
Actually, is it, if this is a real quick one, we'll answer it, but if not, can we just save this for new business and move on to the next application? Because we're done with this applicant?
Actually, yeah, but my question is, and you don't need to answer it now, you can get back to me later, because going forward on this, is this something just in this area? Or I don't understand why we're referring to residential parking as a parking lot? And you can let me know later.
Steve, as a point of action, should we table that application?
Yes, thank you.
All right, I move we table the application for 131, 133 Garrett Avenue.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next applicant is Villanova University, 800 East Lancaster Avenue, consolidate five lots through two, two-lot consolidations consisting of the South Campus and the Aldwin Triangle. All yours, Nick.
Evening. Nicholas Canalia, representing the applicant. Alex will come up and describe what is happening here. This is a lot consolidation of basically, remember, the CICD consisted of multiple lots, which you're allowed to have. You're allowed to have contiguous parcels. But also part of the CICD is either have to then have cross easements or consolidate the lots. So, we're consolidating the lots for the CICD, and then on the other side, on what is known as a West Lancaster Parking Lot, where CO, that is being consolidated.
Excuse me? Can you speak into the microphone?
I was right on it.
Okay, okay, well, it wasn't good. Wasn't getting through.
So, starting over again, there are two lot consolidations going on here. One is the area that includes what we know as the CICD, which is the PI zoning district, and that is being consolidated because it has separate lots. Part of the CICD permits you to have contiguous slots, but then requires you that you do a lot consolidation or a cross easement plan. So, what we're doing is a lot consolidation plan. Then you have the lot consolidation for the CO zoning district, which is where the West Lancaster Parking Lot is going. And in addition to that, Villanova is acquiring from SEPTA what we know as that driveway, Church Walk, that was owned by SEPTA, and that's where we're building the bridge. So, in order to build the bridge on Villanova's land as opposed to SEPTA's land and having to get easements and such from SEPTA's in order to build the bridge, Villanova is acquiring that SEPTA parcel, which will also be part of the PI. It is zone PI, will become part of that consolidated PI zoning piece. And that's all that's going on here. There's no plans for development or anything like that. It's just basically what we're required to do under the CICD ordinance.
And that purpose is for the parking lots? Is that what that's for?
Well, for the CO is for the parking lots, and on the other side is for the CICD.
Nick, the zoning is not changing on this, correct?
The zoning's not changed.
All right, thank you.
Alex Tweedy with Villanova Civil Engineer for the applicant. Nick pretty much covered it. Like he said, this is lot consolidation only. It's really just cleaning up of some property lines, no construction, no development as part of this. This is just for the property consolidations. So, as he said, there's two separate consolidations going on. On this plan is the area west of the visitor parking lot, west of Church Walk, west of where the bridge is going. So, these are all the smaller buildings where the West Lancaster Parking Lot's going. So, all those individual lots are just being consolidated into one single parcel. When we went through the conditional use process, we discussed that these were going to be consolidated, so this is just the paperwork to complete that consolidation. And then, as previously described, this is, you know, the area of the main parking lot where the housing is going. The SEPTA property where Church Walk was, was in this location. So, as Nick said, in order to construct the bridge, we're buying, we're acquiring that property from SEPTA, and then just consolidating them into the original main parking lot lot. So, really, we're just removing SEPTA's ownership in the middle here and consolidating everything into one single lot. You know, we've reviewed Roger's letter. They're all will comply, there's a couple minor procedural items that we have to get. I think one clarification, one of the descriptions, and he's asked for two additional supporting documents, which we'll be more than happy to provide. In fact, we've already given him one of them, and I think the only other comment was to sign the plans when we resubmit them, which we will do. So, what we view is it's all will comply. The one item we were requesting was a waiver to process. This is a prelim slash final instead of going through two stages, and that's everything.
Thank you.
Sorry. Couple, couple of quick questions. The lot consolidation of West Lot, I mean, that's not a requirement of the CICD because it's not in the CICD, correct?
Correct.
But I do believe, and I remember the conversation from the development, that it was by virtue of consolidating those, it helped to eliminate all the different buffers you'd have to do between each of the lots.
I don't think we would have to do different buffers because, remember, I think the buffer's under required between residential. It just makes it cleaner and removes all the property lines, so it's one parcel.
Right, okay. That one, I mean, I remember us talking about that one. That doesn't surprise me. I am a little surprised about this Aldwin Triangle one, and I'm really racking my brain as I sit here, trying to remember, because we had a whole conversation about the, in the conversation about CICD, the appropriateness of law consolidation across a public road. And Eithan Avenue is a public road, and I don't recall, I recall, I don't have the CICD right in front of me, and it's not in my book because my book's older, but I don't recall that it specifically required you to do lot consolidation of Aldwin Triangle with South Campus, and South Campus isn't even part of the CICD, so why would that need to be consolidated?
I can explain this, and really, the issue is, it's the way the deed was originally written. The deed is over 100 years old. The deed was originally, these properties, I believe this property or the deed existed before the railroads and even some of the roadways. So, the deed for this property is the outbound of the center line of Lancaster Avenue, the border of the Barley Co. neighborhoods, all the way down around Aldwin and back up. And then what happened was all the other subsequent conveyances to SEPTA or the township or anything like that was excluded out of that original deed. So, those exclusions still occur, but just by the nature of the way the deed is written, the outbound of the property still stays the same, and then all these items are still excluded. So, we're not changing anything in the deed except for, at one point, there was an exclusion for SEPTA owning this property. We're removing that exclusion and going back to the, we're keeping the original deed. So, just by the nature of the way the deed was written, all the remaining properties are added in the deed, or included in the deed, but they don't modify anything.
So, this is a question for staff and maybe on Rice. And it was, it's funny, it was mentioned in the previous application, and I don't ever really remember seeing it before, but the requirement that people, that an applicant provide a title report, and so for subdivision, so for, you know, I see the deed in here...
We have a title report. Title report's provided.
Okay.
It's the same title report as the CICD. It included all, actually, when we did the title report for the CICD, we did it for this whole area, including the CO area.
Is that the handwritten thing?
The pardon?
It was handwritten?
That was the deed.
Okay, so...
Susan, we have a title report.
Okay, good, thank you. I just had never seen the comment before.
But just another, just a point, this is not a subdivision or a land development. This is a lot consolidation.
I just, interestingly, had this conversation with staff right before the meeting, that law consolidation's considered sub, under subdivision. That, I mean, that person might have been mistaken, but that was the conversation we had.
It's separately defined in the code.
Okay, so then the final question is, what, if any, impact will the, will this law consolidation have on any setback lines of the Aldwin Triangle, you know, and/or any of the other properties where the, where Eithan Avenue is going through the middle of what you're consolidating?
Nothing. Eithan Avenue has a right-of-way to it, and the setbacks are from the right-of-way, so that remains unchanged.
Villanova owns the middle of the street, just like everyone in Ranor-Jonah, you own the middle of the street. Villanova, like everyone else in Ranor, you own the middle of the street. So, Villanova actually owns this whole area here, and there's a right-of-way that goes through it. So, it has absolutely no effect on any setbacks.
Okay.
Just to be clear, is it basically the driveway that's in existence now that is what's being conveyed here?
Yes.
Okay.
Back here in May, it's your little area, maybe it breaks...
It's the SEPTA, it's the Church Walk driveway, and then the SEPTA parking area.
Back when this was in the CICD process, if you had owned that then, would it have changed your ability to have done some buffering back then? I think there were some conversations about land you did or didn't own back there.
No, I think that was that...
No, I think that was that, remember the area we, that we, is still involved getting approval from SEPTA to do additional buffer, which SEPTA did not give us. And I believe that is owned land owned by SEPTA. That's not, that is still.
So you're not buying that land?
We're not buying that. And I think that's actually their, you know, their track.
Well, that's what I was trying to remember about. Okay, thank you.
My question, why, if you're going to do, through this, why don't you create four separate pieces of ground, rather than one giant lot consolidation across the streets and rights of way of the railroad?
I guess there's different ways to do it. You know, the original deed was written the way it's written, so we're matching the way the existing deed is set up.
So, do you, let me ask the question carefully. Villanova owns to the center of Eithen Avenue on both sides, right?
Well, Villanova owns the entire four parcels altogether, and then there's right of ways or exemptions taking out of it. Villanova owns this whole shape, and then it's basically, has right of way for Eithen Avenue taken out of it, has right of way for the R-100 taken out of it, then an exemption for the SEPTA driveway off Aldwin taken out of it. And currently, it has another exemption for this driveway and that parking taken out of it, which is what we're basically removing and consolidating in this process.
Are you using the word exemption as an easement? Is what these are easements?
No, there was, I think, it was a, it was an exception to the deed.
It was carved out of the deed. There was, because SEPTA was a, or P&amp;W, the old Philadelphia Western, it was basically taken out of the deed itself. So they accepted that area out of the deed.
So basically, they described the lot, and they say, except for this piece, except for that piece. And this is one of the pieces that you're putting it back into the original?
We're unaccepting.
Okay.
The third SEPTA piece.
But SEPTA does own that right of way for the train.
Yes.
That's not owned by Villanova.
No, no.
But Villanova does own Eithen Avenue.
Yes, and there's a.
Well, and then there's a right of way over top of it.
Right. But I, just to clarify.
Right.
Okay.
Any other board questions? Any questions for the public?
I'm Roberta Winters, President of the League of Women Voters of Radnor, for whom I'm speaking. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening to speak regarding the consolidation of lots as proposed by Villanova University. As you're aware, the local league has adopted a land use position that supports our monitoring and examination of all activities in the township pertaining to zoning, planning, transferring, and acquisition of land, and we support the protection of open space and recreational land and take action when appropriate. We believe that the law consolidation proposed may not be in keeping with Radnor Comprehensive Land Use Plan. As you may know, the plan calls for preservation of existing land uses and adequate buffering between commercial, residential, and other land uses, specifically in regard to Lancaster Avenue and the Blue Root areas. The plan calls for maintenance of open space and green areas, the minimization of traffic problems, rigorous implementation of existing commercial zoning regulations, and the avoidance of commercial expansion in any way. Lot consolidation will allow for reduced buffers and setbacks between commercial and other land uses. This could reduce open space and green areas. As a result, increased surface parking on either of these locations could serve to exacerbate already existing traffic patterns and pedestrian risks. More directly related to institutional settings, the plan recommends limiting expansion of institutional uses to area within the present limits of campus areas that is zoned as institutional districts, and requiring that the long-range land use plan, a condition of approval for any new construction or change at institutions, be updated every two years. The development of the CIC district expands Villanova's institutional use to the commercially zoned areas to provide for the required parking. In fact, it appears that the approval of the proposed conditional use development resulted in a de facto approval of the expansion of parking lots on the south side of Lancaster Avenue and beyond the existing CICD area. All studies, including those related to traffic control and accommodation for cars, incorporate these lots that the township plan had noted were commercially zoned. We believe that the plan and commission, in acknowledging the recommendations of the Comprehensive Land Range, Land Use Range Plan, should consider the commercially zoned parcels on this evening's agenda apart from the CICD, and clearly limit development only to those zoned institutional. Although given standing, the league was summarily dismissed when attempts were made to address this point at the final conditional use hearing. Now this evening, the request to consolidate lots appears to be the next step in this complex process. Further, without the university providing a long-range land use plan as recommended as a requirement for construction, we believe the public and our appointed and elected representatives are acting without full information. Based on concerns brought forth by those in the Radnor community, the league strongly encourages the plan and commission to gain answers to these questions and make them available to the public before making any recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. Who owns all these properties? Can confirmation of the titles be sought, as well as the existence of any stipulations, restrictions, or covenants within the titles or related documents regarding previous or present developments that would dictate their use? Are all documents appropriately signed and executed? Do the buildings and/or any of the related grounds have historical significance that require review? What are the proposed specific short and long-term uses of these parcels? How do these properties fit into the comprehensive long-term development plans of the university? How will future use impact stormwater issues? Are plans compliant with current requirements and recently enacted waters of the United States that include wetlands? Will considerations resulting from consolidation modify the maintenance of site-specific open space and green areas in this densely populated area of the township? What change in traffic patterns and pedestrian safety require review in light of any surface parking on these lots? And what ways will future developments contingent on lot consolidation result in the expansion of the development beyond the approved boundaries of the CICD? It's regrettable that this lot consolidation seemingly a prerequisite for the CICD proposed plan was not addressed during that process. It would seem prudent that such a critical component be given careful scrutiny as it relates to further university development initiatives and the public good. The League of Women Voters of Radnor urges that you take the necessary time to gather and publicly present as much relevant information as possible before proceeding, and we thank you for your ongoing consideration.
Thank you.
I'm Rickley in Artie Aldwin Lane. I guess I kind of, I'm on board with the previous, with Susan's comment about, I'm a little mystified why this is, why this is necessary, since it's, it has nothing to do with the CICD. I'm speaking of consolidation of the properties on this sheet in particular, especially as Mr. Tweedy just conceded, in fact, the railway did precede the deed. However, if that's procedural, then I suppose I don't have any objection on that head. However, I'm concerned about the triangle and the ultimate fate of the triangle, as I live on Aldwin Lane. As things stand now, as far as the CICD approval on that project's concerned, 2.3 acres of the Aldwin Triangle are to be dedicated to offset the impervious excess within the CICD. Now, we have a sketch plan of which 2.3 acres those are to be, but now I'm not so sure. Additionally, in the past, VU's indicated that their intention is to dedicate the entirety of the triangle in any case, simply because after the subtraction of 2.3 acres, the remainder will be too small to build on. But if the triangle becomes just a corner of a much bigger buildable area, then that intention may change. And here, I don't know whether people are aware of the Health Center controversy when the Health Center was originally proposed, but one of the reasons the Health Center, the Health Center was originally supposed to be built on the Aldwin Triangle, and wound up on North Eithen, across the street from the eventual Davis Center. And most of that was because the Aldwin Triangle is deemed to be too small. The argument was made at the time by counsel that the Aldwin Triangle should be considered as part of South Campus. That should be one contiguous lot, therefore big enough to accommodate the Health Center. But that argument was rejected in court. So I don't know why we're here tonight, talking about it again. What becomes of the zoning within the former CO district on the previous sheet? This new consolidated lot will enclose VU office buildings, which CO use, obviously. Parking for the new dorms, as Roberta Winters just mentioned, this is a CICD use, or a PI use at the very least. And it will also include Moriarty Hall up here, which I understand, I guess, is a nonconforming use, but it's a dormitory. It's PI. You have three zoning uses within one parcel as a result of this. The title search, the deed book, and support of the CICD project does show, among other things, that while VU once owned outright all these lands in question, in 1980, they transferred ownership of the South Campus and Pike Properties away, and are now leasing them back. The lease expires in 2025, in its most updated form. Whoever owns these properties then, has that owner actually been notified that their properties are being consolidated? This drawing also shows still this flag of R-1 extending eastward from the P&amp;W law. With this consolidation, this will be completely enclosed within a new parcel. What's to become of that land? As well, the lot line along the south side of the triangle, as it extends, the northwest crosses a portion of the high-speed line. Parking lot right about here. And then it clips a portion of the backyard of 37 Aldwin Lane, which is a house that's long-served as a residence for Augustinian friars. It's an informal dormitory. May very well be owned by VU, I don't know. What are the plans for this property, and could it be appended to this new massive lot at the fullness of time? There's the question, of course, also as to the wording of the CICD as relates to buffering. It's vague enough that I suppose we're okay, but where required, a 20-foot buffer planning strip shall be provided on land owned by the applicant. In addition, a 20-foot buffer planning strip in accordance with 2871 shall be provided anywhere within 200 feet of the CICD unless waived. This additional buffer planning strip shall be located on lands of the applicant in place so as to effectively screen the proposed CICD from any adjacent residential uses. Well, the adjacent residential, the line just moved. I think we're talking about a buffer here. But maybe now we're talking about a buffer here. And I'd like some clarification on that point and everything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Board comment?
I do have a question for staff. So there was a request on a waiver for the preliminary and finals being two separate How does the staff have a feeling, one way or another, on that?
There's no building proposed on this. Nothing's going to change. This is one of those things, unless you want to bring them back and go through the same conversation, it just doesn't, I don't see any reason not to do it in one step. I think the Board of Commissioners would probably do the same thing, with no development proposed, removing the lot lines.
Thanks. John, you want to lead us off again? No?
I have no comments.
Good.
One thing that might be helpful is to have a plan that just hatches out the area or something, to make a visual for people who want to see what the actual change is, because it might, it might be clearer for people. You know what I'm saying? Like a visual of what the actual change is, what is now and what is to be in this, in this particular.
So a couple of things. One is that, well, following up on Regina, yes, I don't know what the existing lots are. I mean, are we taking four lot, one, two, three, four lots and consenting it down to one? You know, the SEPTA lot plus four different lots of Villanova's land.
Is that a question for the applicant, or are you pining?
Oh, I'm running the question.
Do you have something to show us that'll clarify?
I apologize. So that's one piece of this question. The other piece is, I would think that we wouldn't generally support a lot consolidation that creates split zoning. And to the extent that this land already has some split zoning with that small piece of R-1, that was a bit of an issue during the CICD process, that's a bit of a concern. But then, it's my understanding, if I understood one of the comments earlier, there's different zoning all along in the West Lot as well. So I wonder if the next thing that's going to come is an application for a zoning change, you know, and that, you know, it's the cart before the horse. Well, it's not that big a deal, because we're not changing anything, but then we're going to lot consolidate, and then the next argument's going to be, well, let's just change the zoning so that it's all the same. And I'm not talking today, and you don't have to rebut right now.
Because it's all part of the same lot now.
Actually, Nick, let us finish our conversation first, please, and then you'll have time.
So, you know, I mean, I understand the value of bringing in the SEPTA piece back into the lot that's part of CICD, but, and I guess I heard loud and clear that Aldwin Triangle, it was of utmost importance to protect that. And I do, maybe not today, maybe there's no application today to do anything on Aldwin Triangle, but, you know, so what safeguards could be put in place to assure that that is preserved the way that, you know, has been discussed for coming up on four years? So those are my comments.
My, the portion around Aldwin Triangle and so forth, they're still going to have to be required to meet the setback requirements from the, from the right of way. I'm making a.
Just comments and a response.
That's fine. So that, they would still have to meet the setback, even though the SEPTA owns the track, so that that is restricted in that way. The portion with the buildings down on the West Lot there, what setback requirements or buffer requirements and so forth are eliminated by the fact that those individual properties become one big property? I mean, does it, does it make any difference? I'm asking that question in a generic way, not expecting a immediate answer. I guess my question is, what, what requirements of the township would have if their separate properties go away, if they're all consolidated? And is that something we want to do? In terms of, we're not, in reality, we're not, okay, are we, we're consolidating this lot with the other half, is that correct? There are two, there are going to be two lots when we're finished, is that correct?
The two, the CO lots remain independent and go into one cluster themselves, and the PI portion stays by itself. CO does not get consolidated with PI.
Thank you. That's my question for now.
So I actually do have a staff question, or actually applicant question first. So all the CO are going to be in one lot? So is there split zoning in the CO?
Well, not all of the CO.
But is there split zoning in the CO?
No.
No, there's not. Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't include the office buildings.
Okay.
It just goes to, it just goes to the limits of stone and feral. It doesn't go into the larger.
So all those lots you're consolidating are CO, and they're going to remain CO?
Yep.
Okay. Same with PI? With the exception of, well, SEPTA, I guess SEPTA's PI now too, right?
Yeah, there's the R-3 area that we've talked about. So, I mean, a lot consolidation doesn't change a zoning line, so.
This R-3 area is already consolidated in with this lot, and this little area, I believe it's right here, Alex.
So that doesn't affect what you're consolidating? You're not adding that?
No.
Because that's already there?
That's already there, and just.
So what you're adding to the existing zoning is already, has the same zoning?
Correct.
So there's no split zoning issue?
No.
But by consolidating the lots?
No additions.
No, no additional split zoning? Okay.
It's not creating split zoning?
Correct.
Correct.
And remember, Villanova's already agreed to preserve the Aldwin Triangle. I mean, that's a non-issue here. We've agreed to do that as part of the Lancaster Avenue project.
That'll come up during land development.
Yeah, it's already been approved, preliminary plan, that's going to come up on, you know, again, under final plan, as part of the conditional use, as part of the land development conditions on the land development application. You know, this has no effect at all on any setbacks, any buffering, or anything of that nature. All it's doing is putting these lots together.
Okay, thanks.
Well, to follow up on Nick's comment, does staff completely agree that the consolidation Well, to follow up on Nick's comment, does staff completely agree that the consolidation has no impact on setbacks and buffering?
Yes.
That's a yes?
No setbacks.
Okay. Now I have a question for John. Fundamentally, isn't this largely the applicant's right to do this? I mean, this is sort of a by right. We don't have a basis to, I don't understand why, in part, this is in front of us, I guess.
It is part of our charter, but it is, I agree, it's pretty much to code.
You have a lot consolidation provision in your ordinance. Some townships call this a reverse subdivision. None of them are covered under the municipality's planning code. Some counties will let you take all these lots and just do a survey and a deed and record the deed, and they're consolidated. I think Delaware County actually requires, when you're consolidating lots, requires a plan, and I think it's more of an administrative thing. So they clean up all the tax parcel numbers, it gets resurveyed, you got a lot of old lots in certain parts of Delaware County. But I know in some other counties, you don't have to do this. And it's just, you know, now this is a much bigger consolidation than I've seen in other places. You just do a deed and you record it because you're not doing a subdivision, you're not building anything. But to answer your question, I think it's required to do it both under your definition of law consolidation and the county is going to require this to be done and recorded.
But it seems to me that basically, we're sitting here and they say, this is what we want to do. And because this one time, as the Villanova process has unfolded, this is one of the few things, it seems to me, that we don't have almost any input, unless I'm missing something. I don't, it's sort of like, yes, we see, we, thank you for your plan, they gave us the plan, okay. That's what it seems like.
This is a ministerial administrative step that is required under your code. There's nothing really to review other than to speculate why it's being done. There's no building proposed. All this land, most of it's covered under the approvals that have already been given, under the land development approval. As Nick said, the conditions for the Aldwyn Triangle are tied into that, they're tied into the conditional use approval. Ultimately, they'll come back for final plan approval and clean up the plans that were approved preliminarily. And then beyond that, they're going to have to do several other steps before they ever get a building permit, including restrict Aldwyn Triangle, post-financial security to make sure everything gets built that's on their plan. So, you know, whatever outside permits are still outstanding, they're going to have to do that. They're going to have to satisfy DEP. So they've got several other steps going forward, but again, to answer your question, there's really nothing to review here other than the fact that the lines are being eliminated. You know, I think on the commercial one, the fact that you have a lot of skinny lots with lot lines, they're wiping those out. So that eliminates, you know, future setback zoning issues. That's the only thing on that one, not so much on this one, that might be a benefit to them depending on what they plan to do with that down the road.
But we don't have the right to say we reject this plan because...
I don't think you have any legal basis to do that.
There's no basis for that. Okay. I have one comment for the applicant and the public in general. I don't understand the need to consolidate Aldwyn Triangle at this time into that one deed. And I think, and now would be an interesting moment to take the step of perhaps making a third Aldwyn deed and allaying some of the neighbors' fears that it doesn't ultimately get dedicated.
Kathy?
I don't, I guess I don't have any concrete comments. My main concern was that the zoning not change. But, sorry Villanova, I'm suspicious. You know, like, I'm sort of waiting for the other shoe to drop. And I'm sorry I feel this way, but I've been on the planning commission for a long time. And I've seen promises made that weren't necessarily kept. But obviously, if we don't have any reason to not go along with this, to me, it makes sense as long as the zoning doesn't change. And I know normally when people are building various buildings on different pieces, we do want it consolidated. It's what you do. And they're doing that. So I think we go along with it.
Elizabeth?
When I first saw the plan come across, my first concern was very much what the public has made clear is that they were really concerned about what was going to happen with the Aldwyn Triangle. Did it affect the buffering? Did it affect how that was used in the future? And could somebody come back at another time and state that, hey, you know, we are going to interpret this comment that we made a few years ago a little differently now, and we can therefore develop it. But that seems to have been cleared up by the comment of the staff, that this is something that, it doesn't change any of the promises that were made and any of the restrictions, those are in writing and have to stay. And I did expect to see some consolidation on this lot. And I think as long as the, according to all the paperwork that's been submitted to us, there's nothing that's been changed or violated or has been told that we're going to build on it. So I would say that, you know, as long as that's the case, then this is kind of just part of the process.
All right, then, if there's no additional comment, I'm going to make a motion. And is it we approve the preliminary and final lot consolidation?
Recommend approval.
What did I say?
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Recommend approval of the preliminary and final lot consolidations, provided that all comments by staff are addressed and satisfied. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carrie's. One more thing, Nick, or actually, oh, John, I mean, Kevin just left. Do you owe us a long-range plan? Does Villanova owe us a long-range plan?
Did we hand one in recently? I think we may have handed one. I think Bob may have...
We submitted one earlier this year.
Okay, thank you. Then whoever had made the long-range plan comment, it has been submitted. Sue, do you, where, is it accessible?
Yeah, it's not online.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
We can get them up.
Next, we have an appeal, 2947, 125 Stratford Avenue and 120 and 124 Bloomingdale Avenue. Let's take a five-minute break, please.
Yeah.
Hey Kathy, you ready? We're going to start. So, yeah, okay, so we'll get back to it. George, if you want to, whenever you're ready.
I'm ready. Good evening. I'm George Brosman. I'm representing the applicant on this application for 120 and 124 Bloomingdale. I'm here with Bo Erickson and Chuck Dobson, our engineer. We've been before you on different occasions for different versions of the plan for redevelopment. We're here tonight for a limited purpose. We have filed a zoning hearing board application seeking some relief that was identified in the review letters, and I'll go over that. But essentially, it is to the zoning board to disturb what we believe are some man-made slopes and also for rear yard setback relief for some decks on the rear of a unit in the back. The township code says that when you file a zoning hearing board application and the project is also a land development, that the zoning hearing board application should be forwarded to you, the planning commission, and that you are free to comment upon it and send your comments to the zoning hearing board. So that's why we're here for the zoning hearing board application. I did want to note that the plan that was submitted to the zoning hearing board is slightly different than the plan that you had seen last time. But we have also submitted that plan back to the township so that our intention is that that will be reviewed. It's essentially the same plan substantively, but we resubmitted it back in with all the appropriate copies, so it will be reviewed by the township engineer and the consultants in due course, and we would plan on coming in July for that. So that item number five on your agenda, I think we can really dispatch with, and we'll cover what we want to cover tonight in item number four, which is the review of the zoning application. Why did we submit revised plans? We revised them to address prior comments that we had from the township staff. We've been to Harb a couple of times, maybe more than a couple of times. We incorporated their comments, and we've had the opportunity to meet with some of the nearest neighbors, and we had some of their comments. So we put those into the plans. And that's what you'll have, that's what the zoning hearing board has before it, and that's what you would have before you for land development review for the July meeting. I won't belabor it, but I think you're pretty familiar with the existing conditions. It's two lots now with commercial uses. Our plan is still to get rid of the nonconforming commercial uses and go all residential here. The plans that we have have evolved over time, and I think it's important, as we consider the zoning relief, that we have requested to think about where we've been, and I won't belabor it, but just want to hit it quickly. Originally, back in August of 2014, we had submitted a sketch plan with nine units. Then, I believe it was around October, we submitted a plan for seven units, which would have been three single-family dwellings along Bloomingdale and two separate twin buildings in the rear. Then in January, we submitted a plan that had six units on it, but there were no new single-family dwellings. It was going to be the two sideways multifamily buildings. So they would be sideways to Bloomingdale. We went to Harb with that plan, and they didn't like it, quite frankly. They wanted us to go back to single-family dwellings along Bloomingdale. To be sure, we went to the Board of Commissioners and showed them the different concepts to get feedback. And we were told by the Board of Commissioners, we want you to follow what Harb wants. So we resubmitted the plans to basically go with this version of the plan that's here. The existing historic building where the art gallery is would go back to a single-family detached dwelling, it's historic use. And then we went back to single-family dwellings along Bloomingdale. One of the earlier comments was that we should have porches on the front, and that an earlier plan had showed them in the setback, and we were asked to push them back, which we did on this plan. And so the plan has a courtyard that comes in, and then there's three units in the rear. So we're down to five new dwellings. We've met with what Harb wanted, the single-family dwellings along Bloomingdale. And the relief that we've asked for, for the zoning hearing board, is slope relief. And I've gotten slope relief from the zoning board before on other applications involving man-made slopes. We believe these slopes are man-made. The lot is basically flat when you look at it along The lot is basically flat when you look at it along Bloomingdale, and there's bands of slopes that go around this structure, the historic structure here, sort of in fashion like this. There was an addition that was added to the rear of this home, and you can see how the bands of slope kinda wrap around that. And then there's some bands of slope in the back here, where there's a large commercial parking lot that goes back here. So there's a band of slopes that wrap around here. And then the existing building, that is a non-contributing resource that we would demolish, there's some bands of slope around that building. So we're gonna make an argument to the zoning hearing board that they're man-made slopes. Regardless of whether they're man-made or natural, we have requested a variance from the zoning board to do that. The second prong of relief is that they're not shown here graphically, but on our new plan, there are decks over top of these patios that extend into the rear yard area. That was done primarily because, as I said, we were asked to put porches here, and we were asked to take them out of the setback, so that pushed everything back. And we wanted to provide a reasonable amount of outdoor space for these units in the back. We think that we have a good planting plan here. And if you look at this lot in the rear, it's long and narrow. And the way this is configured, I don't think will have a big impact on this lot back here, especially with the plantings that we can do. We've had occasion to meet with the neighbors who own the property on the corner here, and the neighbors that live in these two units, the abutting properties here. And we have agreed to continue to work with them on reducing the heights of our units and supplementing the planting along this area. We're gonna continue in dialogue with them as we approach the zoning hearing board. Usually, when you get a zoning application, I don't think you've had the benefit of seeing a plan as much as you have with this, because we've been here. So we did hand out, just so you would know, that the responses to the engineer review letters that we had on this plan, as I said, the plan addressed most of those comments and is resubmitted in for your July meetings. But we did hand out our response letter so that you could see that we have addressed most of the other comments we've received. I think the only things that we're really not addressing are the, in the Gannett Fleming letter, there were comments on their zoning, number six and seven. They had to do with that we needed to seek the relief for the steep slope variances, so we're complying with that by seeking that relief. And then in the subdivision and land development ordinance section of the Gannett Fleming letter, there was comment number four that addressed the issue of what should be the width of this driveway. Should it be 24 feet, which is the width for basically parking facilities? To the extent that we need a waiver from that, we will be seeking that in land development to go with 22 feet. We feel that 22 feet works adequately and is more appropriate to stay in scale with the neighborhood. We don't wanna have a big institutional-looking driveway. And we do note that we had a similar issue on the 115 Stratford Avenue project that this developer did. And I can't recall if the township just said that that driveway there is 22 feet for 11 residential units. I can't recall exactly if the township said that it was just permitted or a waiver was granted. So we would be seeking that same thing, but here with only five units being served instead of the 11. And again, the primary reason is to, we want this look, this residential scale and feel. So that's basically, in a nutshell, we believe we've come a long way in addressing the comments that we've received, and we think we're on the right track with this plan. And we hope that we're going to be able to secure the relief we need from the zoning board in June. And we're hopeful that we're gonna have the support of our adjoining neighbors as we do that.
Thanks, George. Before you get too far, could you tell us how many feet of relief you're looking for, and for how many units in the rear?
Oh, so it's the three units in the rear.
All three?
Each will have a deck over the patio. That would be on the second level, the patio's at grade. And I believe it's, what is it, 18? We would be left with eight? There would be, if you measured to the end there, there would be an 18-feet setback.
And what is code?
It's 30.
So you're looking for 12 feet of relief?
Yes. And it's 30 because we're classified as multifamily, because we have these three here. And that's, of course, a dimensional variance.
And so, the end of the deck is 18 feet from the property line. What is the end of the housing structure, the unit itself?
They complied with the 30 feet.
So they're 30 feet. Is the patio within that 30 feet, but that's allowed? Is that?
Well, the patio, the patio, it's at grade, so it's our position that that is not in the setback. It doesn't extend up. The decks are essentially going over top of the patios.
So they're gonna be 12 feet a deck, is basically?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Is there any question I had?
That's a first-floor elevation, the deck, or a second floor?
Second floor.
The second floor is the main floor, is that correct? There's the bottom floor is a, there's a garage under there, and then... And then... Fine. Thank you.
That's why we'd like to have the deck off the second floor.
That's kinda what I figured, this would be clear.
How high is the deck above grade?
Approximately 10 feet.
Approximately 10 feet for the microphone.
Is there a third floor?
Not on the deck.
But inside the structure?
Yes.
So there's the ground floor, and then the main floor and a second floor above that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
This conversation came up, this is a question for John Rice. John, this conversation came up when we saw this plan a few months ago, which is, how is it that they're allowed to have two single-family homes on a single lot? I mean, this is, and I know that we have the definition for a multifamily, I'm trying to find it, the multi-dwelling group. But the multi-dwelling group applies to having a group of multifamily dwellings. So for instance, the applicant has a previous application with the Villa Stratford, where it's a series of multifamily buildings, and that's a multi-group dwelling, I'm not saying it right, but anyway. But since when do we allow individual, single-family homes, more than one, on a single lot? That's the part that's kind of throwing me, because they're not, the multiple dwellings, and then there's that whole thing about unified group of buildings. If this were a lot with all, you know, multifamily buildings on it, that would be a unified group. But it's not. We're doing like a mix. It's like a little mini-development in here. And I still don't understand why that's allowed. And then, so if you wanna think about that for a minute. And then, Mr. Brosman, do you have the grading permit that the man-made slopes were created? Because you and I have been doing this for a number of years. You know that the law, there was that case a few years ago here in Radnor, man-made or not, steep slopes are steep slopes unless you have the grading permit under which the man-made slopes were created. There was a whole law case, a court case, at the house on Conestoga and South Wayne.
Yeah, we've asked for the variance, so we can ask for a variance. It's my position that it shouldn't apply to man-made, but I don't have to make that case, because I have asked for the variance.
And are you able to meet the impervious if you provide the 25-foot right-of-courtway for the driveway? Or do you need the 22-foot in order to meet the impervious? Because I think you're bumping up against the impervious.
I don't know. We haven't done that calculation. I can tell you that we're close, but that is not why we're proposing the 22-foot drive. It's because it's the right thing to do. And if, you know, if push came to shove, I don't believe that that code provision even applies. But, you know, we're not going there.
Is that something we're supposed to be commenting on tonight as part of our review? Is it? Or is it something additional?
I don't think that's part of the...
I mean, I'd like to be specific, because this is going to zoning.
That's not part of the zoning relief that we...
Okay, then let's table that one.
That's not even in the zoning ordinance.
Well, he's going to zoning, so I'm bringing up things that I think are zoning issues, but that's fine. Those are my own comments.
That provision is in the salad.
So I still wanna hear about the concept of having multiple, single-family homes on a single lot.
Researching, anybody other?
Well, I was, along those lines, I was curious, along those lines, I was curious as to the ownership, how the ownership is structured on a multiple, on a lot like this, when somebody acquires one of the properties, or one of the residences?
It'll be like a homeowners' association.
John, you ready for us?
Yeah, I'm not gonna walk through this. If Susan wants something in writing, we have discussed this. Kevin and I have discussed it.
John, I just never heard an answer about it.
I've discussed it with Baron. And it's a permitted use, the way the ordinance is laid out. You've got a bunch of different definitions, one of which is unified group of buildings, which is in the definition section. And under the R5 district, you've gotta use multiple dwelling apartment house or townhouse as defined in 280-4B. So it's, the fact that you've never seen this before doesn't mean it's not permitted.
I never heard an answer, John, so thank you. That was, it's never got answered the last time, so I didn't hear it.
Yeah, it's permitted use. These are multifamily dwellings, but the way your definitions are, to some extent, inconsistent.
Yes.
But are very broad.
Okay.
On top of that, it's a permitted use.
Okay.
Yeah, we bounced this around for several months now, and, you know, there might be some disagreement with some people in this room about it, but it's permitted use. And just, you know, they're, I think they're not here tonight for a land development review. They're here to know what the planning commission thinks about the variances, you know, the steep slope, and then the interpretations. And even though there's two items on the agenda, I don't think they're here for the second one. They're here for just the zoning hearing board.
It's my understanding as well. Any other board questions before we get to public comment?
Yeah, can you talk about the property behind the attached units? Is that one lot, all the way behind there? Is that all, that's all one lot, the entire length?
No.
For Mike, Mike?
It's a...
There's about 55 feet in this corner, which belongs to a resident that actually fronts on Lenore.
Okay.
But the rest of it does belong to this, I guess, well, this half of the twin that exists up there off of Southwest Wayne Avenue.
Have you been in conversations with that homeowner? No. Yeah, 'cause I have a little concern about the setback on a deck that's gonna be 10 feet off the ground. But I don't know how you guys feel about it, but I would not be in favor of recommending that variance. I don't see the hardship there.
Yeah. Any other questions?
The... Question?
Would you like public comment? Then please come up, state your name, and tell us what you'd like to say.
I am Kenneth Lane, and it's opportune right now, because I have the property behind it you're just talking about. And there has been no discussion with me at all on what they might do. There's just not many in comments at all. I have not, all along, not protested the whole idea, and I've been going along with it. But I just, right now, there is a long arbor bed that's maybe as much as 20 feet high. It's very old. And so it provides...
Like a row of them?
Yes, a whole row of them. My lot is very long. I used the lot. I have a garden throughout the whole, so I'm outside a lot.
And, excuse me, are the arbor bed on your side or their side?
No, it's on their side.
On their side, okay.
And I would like to have that to stay, if at all possible, or something of that height that gives me the same privacy. I developed this garden over 20 years, and invite you to look at it at any time, but it is very important to my life. And the whole idea that there's gonna be a population now that is overlooking, I would like to have the privacy of some green along there, and promised, and done, and carried out.
Okay, that sounds like a conversation the two of you need to have.
Hi, Baron Gemmer. My wife and I own this property here, the second Ever Victorian to the left of the single-family home on the left there. I wanna preface my comments today, which is something that George and I believe Beau may have already brought up, that they, with the exception of perhaps Ken on the back there, we did meet with the developer, with Beau and George today, to talk about some of the concerns that were raised, not only at the Harb, but then from our concerns about massing and height in general in terms of some of the privacy. So, let's see, what is it? A little over four hours ago, we saw those plans for the first time. And they did attempt to address that through lowering the grade, the elevation grades by about two feet in some of the areas, in the very middle, as well as lower the heights of the building to 30 feet. Now, the plans that I looked at don't actually bear that out, but we've been told that that's what would happen. And obviously, as has been alluded to, we'll need to come to some agreement before the zoning hearing board. Otherwise, we might be opposing the application. But I wanted to give you that background. You don't necessarily have that information for yourselves, but that's where I'm coming from right now with the rest of the comments I'm gonna make. As to the relief that's being sought, it is significant. There are a lot of steep slopes. I don't know what the square footage of the area is. And there's the rear yard setback that abuts Ken's property there with the 30 down to 18. So I don't wanna downplay that at all. Obviously, as was alluded to by Solicitor Rice and was raised by Ms. Stern, the multifamily thing, I don't agree on the interpretation there, but in some ways, it may become a moot point. Because should those representations that were made earlier bear out, to be accurate, and after we review them, be acceptable in terms of the massing of the buildings, the change in width, the change in height that fits more with the neighborhood, I could see myself supporting even this significant amount of relief based upon the other accommodations they may be making. I reserve that right now, because I've only, again, seen those plans a little over four hours ago. I'm not here then to oppose this nor support it, because it's still unknown. Obviously, if things don't bear out, we'll be there at the zoning hearing.
It would be helpful if you could just tell us what your position is, and not that you're waffling back and forth.
I'm not waffling.
'Cause, and I understand your position, I get it, but you need to make a definitive statement to us, not that you're in the middle of negotiations. That doesn't really help us too much. You need to tell us where you stand or what your issues are relative specifically to the zoning, 'cause that's really what we're addressing tonight.
Yes, but obviously, you have to understand, in the speaking with the applicant, it's the zoning in terms of hardship or accommodations they would made can be offset by things that aren't related to zoning, which is still within the legal height, bringing that down, changing the grade. So some of the things in the negotiation aren't related to zoning. If they weren't doing those things, I'd probably be saying, "Look, you're asking for way too much relief."
You're commenting on their application relative to the zoning. You can't say, "I'm in favor of it," if they grant me all these other things that I like, and I'm not in favor of it, not. You just comment specifically on their application for the zoning, if you would, please.
Steve, hang on. I think what Baron's trying to say is that, and this happened, this is now the second or third time, the plan that we're seeing up there, that schematic, is different from the plans that were submitted to us. I think what Baron's trying to say is that he probably would be opposing it, but they've already made some concessions. So that up there, and I, this is gonna be...
We don't see steep slopes on that plan, so we don't even see a deck on that plan.
plan.
I understand that, but what I'm saying to you is that there's yet another new plan. This was going to be part of my board comment, so I'll wait. I just think... That's what Baron's trying to say is, he got yet another, more new information today, and is still trying to digest it.
Well, you still need to make a comment.
Oh, go ahead.
Are you saying that this plan that's on this screen is what you just saw four hours ago, or there's still another plan?
I can't speak to this one because I think the driveway's slightly different. I actually saw elevations and some grading things, so I don't want to make that representation. We haven't seen complete plans. We were talking more in terms of some of the concepts of the massing and height, which are some of the big, big concerns. So, I mean, I wish... Steve, I wish, to your point, I could, but as Susan said, I've only seen a new plan five hours ago, so I can't... Prior to that, I would have been opposed, but I'm saying, let me... What I would say is, I want you to have your entire discussion just with all the issues that have been brought up, as if I didn't even speak, but I feel, as a interested party who's been here before, I need to state where I am. And right now, where I am is, I'm neither right now because there's... I'm optimistic that we'll reach an agreement that I would actually be able to get, support these.
That's fair enough.
Okay.
That's perfect.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Any other public comment? Then if we could just have some board comment or additional...
I have one.
Oh, please come up.
There is going to be changes with... To the height of the land in the back of the house that's already there. Is that true or not? That there might be...
Yeah, Beau, could you please come up and address the height? Because Doug has that question as well.
Yeah, the rear of this area here. I'm talking about here. This area is going to stay as it is. The area along the property line is going to stay at grade. The area where the arborvitae's is going to stay at grade, and the arborvitae's are all going to stay. What is happening to address some of Baron's concerns is, these houses and the site as a whole is going to be lowered, making them less height visible, and that's one of the things we're working with Baron on to provide. But all the grading and all the screening that's here will remain.
Yes. So there will not be a wall here?
There'll be a...
I meant it's almost a second story.
Yep. This area here will remain exactly as height as there'll be retaining wall that comes around behind our decks, so that we can lower the houses into the ground.
About how many feet?
It's... We haven't... It's approximately three feet.
Okay, close enough.
How about if we start at this end?
So before we sat back down, we... As we were circulating information and some new papers were being passed out, I happened to get privy to the information that this was kind of a newer plan that was coming up, and that it was answering a lot of the concerns that were brought up before, and that was more of a will comply at this point. And I do understand that there's still some steep slope things, but I think the thing is, is that I really do... No, can we comment, or are we supposed to just ask questions? What am I allowed to do here?
This is our time to comment.
Okay, good. I think that it's a valued effort for him to try and lower it, to make it work for the neighbors, and I commend him for that. And I don't see as much of a problem with the steep slope because a lot of the Wayne area and a lot of the areas in our township have been man-made lands, and they've been cleared out, and the soil wasn't taken off, and they were just piled places. So even though there's no proof that he can present to that, because we don't have records back on a lot of these properties even 10 years ago, I feel that it's been a good effort to try... He's made so many revisions. I would support the fact that the grade, the steep slope issue was being addressed. And the retaining wall being under four feet, that's barely even a structural retaining wall. It's more of a garden detail. So that's not very much at all. The biggest thing is that, what do the neighbors feel about the decks off the back and the zoning of that? If the buffer is kept, then it would be a nice thing to have for the homes, and 10 feet off the ground is not that bad, as long as it doesn't... As long as the neighbors are in agreeance. I think that's... It's kind of what came down to the one we had off of Farm Road, where you work with the neighbors and let that be, guide you into what is acceptable. And so I don't... I'm not opposed to it. I think that it's fine.
I have a question. Since you're working on lowering the building a few feet, will that deck still be 10 feet off the ground, or will it now be eight feet off the ground?
It'll be 10 feet off the ground. No, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It will be 10 feet off the ground, but the ground will be lowered.
But your ground will be lower. So the effect would be like having it at eight feet?
Correct.
If it were currently on...
If it was at the existing grade, yes.
Correct, okay.
How much higher or lower is that elevation than the neighbor's rear yard? So are you higher than the neighbor's rear yard at that point?
We are lower than the neighbor's.
So the neighbor's rear yard is going to be a couple of feet above your patios?
A couple of feet above our finished grade and our patio elevation, yes.
Okay, so then we're only talking maybe like six feet above their elevation per se?
There's a little cross slope, but it'll be, I would say, between three and six feet, yes.
Okay.
What I was going to say is, I really don't have an objection to anything that you're asking for. The only one suggestion I might make, and you might not necessarily have to do it, you could consider maybe making your deck... You said they're currently 12 feet in width?
Yes.
Maybe 10 feet might be a little less objectionable if you had to do it.
Well, I've seen most of these plans, and it is by far the best plan. I think I agree with Kathy that maybe a 10-foot deck would be a better final design. And if, in the process of making these grade changes, you go a little bit further than three feet, that's okay, too. I don't have a big problem with the zoning relief you're asking for.
I don't either, for all the reasons mentioned.
Do you have a question? These... You say the height... These are... Are they going... You said, is the height being lowered? The height of the structure itself, or is it just the same structure just being reduced by three feet because...
Architecturally, the units are being redrawn to have a lower roof. So they will be... They will be lower in the building themselves as well.
The ones that were... You put up on where the... I call it the San Francisco Restaurant over on whatever... What's the height to the center line of the roof there? About approximately?
I don't recall on those.
Is this the same height or shorter than that?
This will be shorter. These will be not as tall.
Okay. They... It doesn't seem unreasonable to me, especially with the single-family dwellings out front and the styles that at least were shown before. Then I think I can support this. Thank you.
So often with zoning variances, it's about getting... It's kind of weighing the pros and cons. You know, there's a... This is going to bring a non-conforming use into conforming. You know, if it's an attractive street scape, there's balance. What's challenging for me tonight, and I think I feel the same way that Baron does, is that, do you have, Chuck, do you have the engineered plans that go along with this picture?
Yes.
With you?
Yes.
Can you throw up the page that shows the grading and/or the zoning chart? So on balance, I think it's headed in the right direction, and I think that's great. And I do want to acknowledge you, because I'm often hard on you guys about density, is that I do want to acknowledge that you brought down the number of units, and I think that this is definitely moving toward the right plan. My concerns still remain the precedent of steep slope, but that's for zoning to answer. They're either going to give it to you or not. And definitely taking down the grading in the back so that the overall imposing structure is less imposing. It's a, you know, that's a... Those are all good things. But without seeing the... Is that the plan with the elevations?
This is, yes.
And you don't show the elevations of the neighboring houses, right?
No, I mean, we have contour lines that generally indicate, but we don't have first floors or top of roofs or any of that, no.
So I'll take a look at that afterwards, but I mean, basically where I'm going is that as long as you guys move in the direction that you're saying tonight, it's hard because I'm looking at, you know, this plan, and it was changed again. You know, if the elevation of the three rear houses is going to come down three feet, which is pretty significant, and you're going to work with the neighbors on the roof lines because some of your other projects have had some pretty imposing appearance in roof lines, you know, then I'm certainly not going to oppose it. And I've been pretty opposed to a lot of things that disturb steep slopes.
Understood.
And because on balance, you know, you're moving in the right direction, and that's a good thing. So that's my comments.
Okay, thank you.
I don't really have so much an issue with the steep slope. It's more the decks. I mean, if you were to stick to the patios, I'd have... I'd prefer that unless you wanted to put the decks in, you know, you could shift the properties, I mean, the buildings forward, and then you'd have... So that's why I don't really see the necessity for the variance there. I don't really see the hardship because you can provide a patio, or you have the option of changing the layout so that you are within the setbacks.
I like the project because I think for a lot of reasons. First off, it's going to bring a non-conforming use into a conforming use. It's going to help return Bloomingdale Avenue to a residential street that it once was, a completely residential street. The 18-foot decks on the second floor are a concern, especially if people want to have parties out there. It might be a little noisier and more annoying to neighbors than it would be if it was on a patio down at a ground level. So that's something to think about. But generally speaking, I'm in favor of the entire project.
So I'm going to take a stab at a motion that I think generally summarizes our opinions, and please chime in if you have any special things you want me to add to it, but...
Can I...
Yeah, go ahead.
An early thought. Two of us recommended smaller decks, and I don't know how everyone else... I mean, I'm supportive of it, the plan, the way it is now, finally, but I'd still like to recommend as a group that we suggest that the decks be only 10 feet off the house, 10 feet of deck off the house. Okay. Here, you're in agreement? Okay. Doesn't matter. Okay, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I just ask one question of the applicant? The deck is going to be off of what... What's on the interior of the residence? From where the deck is going to be?
What room?
Is it coming off the kitchen?
It'll be coming off the... It'll bite, bro. Sorry.
The deck will be coming off the family room. And the... If we can ask to have the recommendation be that we go forward to the zoning and hearing board as proposed, we would appreciate that. If you have issues of the size of the deck, that could be addressed when we come back before you later, because we've already submitted our plans to the zoning and hearing board. Please.
So basically, what he's saying is, it's an up or down on the 12-foot, the 18-foot setback?
Only for purposes of recommending it to zoning to... Or indicating that we don't object, I guess is a different way.
Right, so you have the... You have the choice of either recommending they grant that 18-foot setback, or the recommendation that they don't.
I'd say personally, I'm in favor of recommending it the way it is and lighter the fact that it's going to be 10 feet minus about three feet. So it's going to... I mean, the height is going to be seven feet, so it's... No, I know, but it does lower the impact, the fact that it's a deck that is seven foot and then extended 12 feet out. So it's not as intrusive. Thanks, perfect.
All right, we're talking about lowering the impact, and it wasn't even on the original plans. We didn't have decks before, so this is a new item.
No, I know, but I... So I want to take a little straw poll.
So it's not less than before, it's a new request.
No, it lowers just the impact of the deck to the neighbors. That's what I meant when I said lowers the impact, not only previous plan. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, if I might add, your recommendation can be what it is to the zoning hearing board. If you recommend no decks or, you know, 10-foot decks, just because his application came in for a 12-foot wide deck, that does not mean that he would have to amend his application. Zoning hearing board will look at your recommendation, take that into consideration in whether they're going to grant relief wholly, partially, or not at all. So your recommendation can be what it is. Zoning hearing board will put the appropriate weight on your recommendation in making their decision. Lots of times applicants go to zoning hearing board asking for a 10-foot side yard, and ultimately, you know, through conversations at zoning hearing board, that side yard gets moved up to 15 feet. So there's that possibility that your recommendation is 10-foot and is brought down to 10-foot does not affect the application nor require the applicant to make any changes prior to going to zoning hearing board.
Okay, thanks. How many people?
Can I... I was going to make a comment. I mean, I don't see any problem going forward with the 12. I really don't. Because if you stop and think about what... This is going to be a certain width and a certain depth. I think that that additional two feet is going to make a very substantial difference in the livability of the residence that's going to be in there. I saw... I'm more in favor of the 12 feet than the 10 for that reason, but...
Good. Then that's a good comment. Thanks, Doug. Just a little show of hands, how many people feel a need to limit the size, make it lower than 12 feet? Would like to in the motion.
I'm not in favor of it at all.
At all? Okay, so...
That's a deck.
Deck at all? Okay, so... It's basic. So I think maybe we should just make the motion as is?
Yeah, I can vote.
Well, that's how it's going to get the most votes, anyway.
Okay. Our motion is to recommend to the zoning hearing board that the applicant's request for relief be granted as stated, as requested.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye, or nay.
That's why I...
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So carries.
Thank you, and then we would request that the next item be...
Tabled.
Tabled.
Move we approve. We are table item five.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So for... So we do have... Let's see, we're... Any general public comment? Thanks, Doug. Okay, any old business? Any new business? I actually have new business, so sorry, guys. So Susan, I can, you know, you're probably paying attention during this one. For the new business, for the Garrett Hill neighborhood?
Yes.
Shouldn't we modify the code?
Absolutely. We should recommend that the private be removed from the private driveway statement as discussed earlier.
Well, it's the garage, I think.
I mean, private garage, so that the definition of garage is what's left.
Right, private be removed. That's what I was looking for. So if you could make a recommendation?
I don't have the specific number.
We don't need it.
No, I think John knows.
John knows what it is, so go ahead.
John, we recommend modifying that section of the code to meet the intention of the Garrett Hill committee, which was no garages in the front.
So that all garages, whether they're in a separate building or part of the main building, are in the rear?
Yes, thank you.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Wait, wait.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry?
I've got to come.
Oh, ooh, all right.
I think we need to...
I might just have to... Sorry. I think we need to immediately address the requirements for medical office parking because of what may happen with the old Biomed project. So I don't think that addressing medical office parking in the same way that you address office parking is adequate. All you have to do is look at Birdmore.
Kath, I think what Kathy's talking about, did you guys know that Penn bought Biomed? Penn Medicine bought Biomed?
Biomed, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was in the Philly Journal last week. Yeah, 35 million. Yeah. I really think that the parking as currently is, is inadequate for a medical office.
Kathy, do you know other municipalities where they spell out that parking requirement differently?
Not off the top of my head, but I don't think it matters.
It's looking for guidance, you know, someone else had...
Yeah, I think if we could have staff make a recommendation?
Or Mr. Gabriel.
And is that...
Is that something, Kevin, that you can have for us by next meeting?
We can try putting something together for next meeting. Ultimately, we can, if your recommendation is to ask for the board to amend that, you know, that would then be something that the board would entertain. We'd introduce it, and then it would come back to you for review.
Right.
So we, so we can do that now?
Similarly to what we just did for the Garrett Hill district, that would be a separate parking regulations for medical office.
Okay, so we don't have to specify, okay, we just ask them to review it? Got it.
Can I make you a real quick question? Is there, do we encounter this enough that there are like standards or stuff that other eight, other areas?
That's what we'll find out if we recommend it to the board. They'll, they'll get a recommendation from our staff.
Right.
And at that point, they may just decide that's not something we want to do.
Well, no, here's the thing. In 28103 off-street parking, we've actually already have lots of uses spelled out, so it's very consistent that we might spell out specific use for medical office, because we already have a variety of uses that we've assigned different parking requirements for. So that's not an inconsistent recommendation, that we might have something that specific.
Kathy, you want to make it?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we address as soon as possible, and hopefully we'll have information in our next meeting, excuse me, regarding changing the ordinance for medical office parking.
So we're making a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners that they review...
Now, I think we, why do we need, why don't we work on it ourselves?
So this way it gets on their agenda.
So we can send it to?
This way it gets on their agenda now, rather than later.
Well...
Kevin, what's your suggestion?
My suggestion is that you make a recommendation to the board to amend, just like you did for the Garrett Hill, amend the ordinance to address medical office buildings as a separate parking requirement in the code.
Okay, if that's a way, and meantime, I guess we could start looking into it.
I second your motion, Kathy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I can, for that upcoming June meeting, I can list that as an agenda item for both of those under community development, yes.
Thanks, Kevin.
There is a, I was about to say, yeah, 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 thanks. So there will be a special meeting, June 17th, for, yes, you, I think, said you couldn't make it, but, for Villanova?
Oh, no, I can't make it.
Okay, can I, can we quit? Okay.
I may be able to make it.
Okay, good. I, I move that we adjourn the meeting for this evening?